Good evening. At this time, I would like to call the City of Bowie Regular City Council Meeting of Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, to order in council chambers. It is now 8:04 PM. Everyone who is able, I would like for you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I would like for the record, Madam City Clerk, whether or not we have a quorum.
Yes, Mayor, we do have a quorum for this evening's meeting. In council chambers, we have Councilmember Rogers, Mayor Pro Tem Wolfley, Mayor Adams, and Councilmember Brady. And virtually via Teams, we have Councilmember Truesdale and Councilmember Estef.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, I will open the floor to any agenda additions, deletions, or amendments. Hearing none, I will move on to citizen participation.
Mayor, for the record, we did receive three comments via email under citizen participation. Those have been forwarded to council, and they are, will be part of the record for tonight's meeting, and we do have some residents signed up to speak.
First, we have Valerie Hall Yancy. And then Stephanie Gaines Bryant. City Clerk, is that correct?
My name is Valerie Hall Yancy, and I am a 24-year resident of Bowie. I have also been a member of the City of Bowie Administrative Review Board and Board of Appeals, and I am a former president of the Bowie Community Media Corporation, and I've served between 2017 and 2023 in that capacity. Needless to say, I have been an active member of our community for decades, and I'm a firm supporter of the city. Stephanie Gaines Bryant and I represent a number of BCMC current and past members who are very concerned about the current management and operation of BCMC. We brought our concerns to the city management, and were told that there was nothing they could do. We are here today to voice our concerns as residents in the hope that the city council would be obliged to act. We'd like to first start with making you aware of blatant violations to BCMC's current bylaws. The agreement between the city and BCMC has expired, and a new agreement will be considered in a few months by this body. The stipulation in Article 1B of that document, the current document, requires BCMC to provide a plan for achieving the goals set forth in our bylaws, and that is what is at issue. Ms. Gaines Bryant will start with stating collective concerns regarding violations of our bylaws by our current BCMC leadership.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, council members. My name is Stephanie Gaines Bryant, as she just stated, and you all might recognize my voice from WTOP radio. I have been on the radio here in the Washington DC area for over 30 years. I've been a resident of Bowie for 29 years. I also have a fitness business, a yoga studio here in Bowie, and I've had that for 11 years. I've also been doing a show for Bowie Community Television, for Bowie Community Media Corporation, for about 10 years. I do two shows, actually. The Sisters for Fitness Wellness Show, where we deal with community issues and health issues impacting our community, as well as a fitness program, a yoga program, we do, where we do a 30-minute yoga practice that includes meditation and postures. We are very concerned, as Valerie just stated, about what's going on, and I'm going to lay out a couple of things, and she's going to give the details of those things. And the current bylaws are not being followed. According to Article 3, Section 5, Election and Term Offices, the last election of board members took place almost two years ago, in June of 2023, under President Valerie Hall's leadership, and at that time Candy Waller was elected to office, who is now the president of the organization. And the problem is that she is electing people to the board, and there has been no annual meeting. She claims that there was a meeting last year, but it was not an official meeting that followed the guidelines that are in the bylaws. One of the second thing is the bylaws clearly state that directors shall serve without compensation. The board members have been receiving compensation. There was an executive director position available, and they are splitting, they have abolished that position, and are splitting the funds from that position. And they have stated that Una Cooper, or Candy Waller has stated that Una Cooper is in favor of this. She said, as a matter of fact, that Una begged her to take the money from this position and whatever other monies they need to line their own pockets. The third issue is the current bylaws require BCMC membership to be limited to individuals residing in Bowie. None, none of the people in leadership positions at this time live in Bowie. Some live outside of Bowie, some live in Hyattsville, some live in Chesterfield, Virginia. And the station has also swayed away from its mission, which is to serve the community. It's turned into Bowie Sports Channel. Many of the people she's brought in have been friends of hers who are involved in the sports community. Now, I love sports, just like everyone else, but that's not the purpose of the station, and we swayed away from our initial goal. Last but not least, before I bring Valerie back in, I had a very disturbing conversation with Candy Waller, the president of BCMC. She called me on the 16th of January at about 2:52 in the afternoon, and she demanded that I take my name off of any list or any correspondence that Valerie might have. She demanded that I do that. She also demanded that I tell her what side I was on, whether I was on Team Valerie or whether I was on Team Candy, and those are her exact words. What team are you on? Any human resources professional would have seen that 52-minute conversation as being harassment, and that's one of the reasons why I'm here today. I just, I can't stand by, because I'm usually standing in the background. I usually don't like to be out front with these type of things, but I'm here to see if you all can please help us do something. Our hands are tied, and I'm going to give it back to Valerie.
Thank you. And to follow up with what Stephanie is saying about our hands being tied is the process to remove a board member is on the board to do. She has placed people of like interests on the board. Placed meaning she has appointed these people. They are not duly elected by BCMC membership, which is a clear violation of our bylaws. And so that is why we are pleading with the city council to support some type of action that would address this. Now, we've sent a number of documents to you, and we know we don't have enough time to go through each document. However, I'd like to highlight a few points that are covered in the package that you have. One, you should have received comments from three concerned residents of Bowie who also served on the board or acted as producers. One comment is from Nevilleon Mitchell, who is a retired Army Lieutenant, and was told by Ms. Waller that he lives outside of the city limits and therefore is not eligible to be a member of BCMC. The irony of her statement is that she also doesn't live within the city limit, and you can check that information, because one of the documents I sent to you was the nomination form that she submitted in 2022 to be on the board that has her address. We had an executive director at that time, and it was his responsibility to check to ensure that people lived within the city limits, and we're not sure what happened, but she slid through. She started as treasurer, and now she's president of the board. In addition, Ms. Waller approved the membership of Mr. Darrell Owens, who lives in Chesterfield, Virginia, as was previously said by Ms. Gaines Bryant. I've also included his producer profile in your package, where he clearly states and references his residency. The second thing I want to bring up about what is included in your package is I've included a copy of the proposed bylaw changes that Ms. Waller has said on numerous occasions the city is completely on board with. She has said this to me directly in a January 6 meeting I had with her. She has said it to other BCMC members, particularly the last meeting that occurred on January 14th, that the city is on board. We want to know who in the city said yes to these proposed bylaws. Let me just very quickly tell you some of the things that is proposed. Article 3, Section 5, and if you want to follow in the package that you have, it allows board member nominations, no, the Article 3, Section 5 that allows board member nominations from the floor has been stricken. Article 3, Section 8 that allows regular meetings of the corporation has been stricken. Article 3, Section 14 now states that an officer cannot be removed without cause as permitted by the laws of this state. Article 3, Section 14, which is a provision requiring appointed officers to the board to be elected at an annual meeting of BCMC membership, has been stricken. She wants to continue to appoint people and not have them duly elected by the body. Article 8, Section 4 proposes a clause that disallows inspection of corporate records, not only by members of BCMC, but by you. So the city who provides funding, oh, is that telling me my time is up? Oh, that's telling me to wrap it up. Okay. So just skipping the other thing, the last thing that I want to say, and thank you for your indulgence. We were told by Ms. Waller that there's going to be a meeting of the membership on March 4th, and she's going to present these bylaws. And we are hopeful that some action will be taken that will not allow this to occur. And we also would like for the council to consider, in their next agreement between BCMC and the city, that they put in a clause that will support the execution of the management and operations of BCMC in the hands of Bowie city residents. Thank you for your time, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Next, we will have Lauren and Michael.
Semenek.
Semenek? Semenek? Semenek?
Very well. Just Lauren. It wasn't either or proposition, I think, so. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and city council, and city manager lot, and city staff. My name is Lauren Semenek. I'm a 19-year resident of the city of Bowie, and I just want to thank you for the ceremony and proclamation that you conducted before this council meeting, and wanted to remark on it for those that are viewing at home and didn't get to attend. We are incredibly grateful that the city thought to build these holding rooms into the city hall. And it has, me personally, surpassed imagination of what it would do for animals in Bowie, domestic animals. Just really three main points. For dogs, it has reunited many a dog with its owner in a timely, expeditious manner, and it's more convenient and local than the owner having to drive to Upper Marlboro and navigate the larger county shelter. For community cats, it's provided a safe, warm, dry harbor for the cats that are either pre-surgery or post-surgery after their trap neuter return, spay neuter surgeries are conducted. They can rest in the dog side of the holding room in their traps, and it has enabled hundreds, hundreds of adoptions of kittens and cats that are adoptable that otherwise would really have no, no other option that's so localized and convenient and organized. So I just want to thank you. It's been, it's been a wonderful decade. We look forward to many, many more years of working with the city council and the city management, the community services department, and animal control. We're really grateful for the strong relationship we have with all of you, and thank you. That's all.
Thank you. And there are no other signups? Okay. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, we will move on to presentations, and we would like to do an adoption and presentation of proclamation P-1-25 honoring the Lambda Gamma Gamma Chapter of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated on the occasion of their 40th anniversary. And yes, I am also a member of Lambda Gamma Gamma of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity. So at this time, I would like to read the proclamation and thank the brothers of Omega Sci-Fi for the hard work and the diligence that they put into mentoring our youth, but also into our community as a whole. And LGG has been, well, Lambda Gamma Gamma has been doing so since they were first founded out by Fort Meade, and that was 40 years ago. So at this time, I'd like to read the proclamation. The City of Bowie, Maryland, a proclamation of the council of the City of Bowie, Maryland, honoring the Lambda Gamma Gamma Chapter of the Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated on the occasion of their 40th anniversary. Whereas the Lambda Gamma Gamma Chapter, known as the Capital Region Qs, was chartered on December 29th, 1984, at Fort Meade, Maryland, and has exemplified the fraternity's cardinal principles of manhood, scholarship, perseverance, and uplift. And whereas, over the past four decades, the chapter has made significant contributions to the Maryland, Virginia, and Washington DC communities through various programs, including youth mentorship, scholarship opportunities, health initiatives, and social action projects. And whereas, the chapter has been recognized for its outstanding achievements, including being awarded the International Graduate Chapter of the Year on multiple occasions, and boasts a membership of over 250 brothers from diverse backgrounds. And whereas, the chapter has organized and participated in numerous events that have enriched the community, such as annual talent hunt program, which showcases the artistic abilities of high school students, and the Crabs and Jazz Crab Feast, which fosters community engagement. And whereas, the city of Bowie acknowledges and appreciates the chapter's unwavering commitment to service, leadership, and betterment of society. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the council of the City of Bowie, Maryland hereby recognizes and congratulates the Lambda Gamma Gamma Chapter of the Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated on the occasion of their 40th anniversary, and commends its members for their dedication to the community and their embodiment of the fraternity's noble ideals. Adopted and presented by the council of the City of Bowie, Maryland on February 18th, 2025, signed Timothy J. Adams, Mayor. Congratulations. Brother Mark Pena, who is the current bossless, would you like to say a couple of words?
I would, Brother Mayor. Got to take off my glasses, because I'm a little old. Good evening, Brother Mayor, esteemed members of the Bowie City Council, and tonight's meeting attendees. My name is Mark Pena, and I have the good fortune of being the bossless of the great Lambda Gamma Gamma Chapter of the Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated. I'm joined by our vice bossless, Brother Christopher Metz, two of our charter members, three past bossly, and several other members of our great chapter. Since our founding four decades ago on the base of Fort Meade, our chapter has sought to uplift our community through hard work, service, and dedication. While we certainly do not work to receive accolades, it is incredibly humbling to receive this proclamation presented by you all this evening. Our brothers, as you mentioned, numbering over 250, work year-round to support youth-based activities, veterans, the unhoused, and the elderly, just to name a few in our community. It's an honor to serve those members of our community, and I thank you for bestowing this great honor upon us. Now, if I may take a point of personal privilege, Brother Mayor, I happen to know that it is a momentous occasion for you as well, sir. You have given 45 years to our great fraternity, so on behalf of the Brothers of Lambda Gamma Gamma Chapter, I'm happy to present you with your 45-year service award, as well as a pin, since I understand you're not wearing one this evening, good brother.
If you don't mind, myself and the council would like to go in and have the, you can pin me, good brother, that would be an honor, and the other members, please join us for a picture.
We can get to it. Absolutely.
Circle one, I'll be gentleman. Balance this out.
I'm like that talk. I'm sorry.
You got everybody?
Yes.
I mean, because there's so many.
I don't know. I don't even know. I remember having it. It was like a rush.
Well, they're the founding members.
Two of the founding members for 40 years.
You want council in there, too? I'm just checking. You got council over there?
One, two.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time.
We will now move on to the appointments and reappointments and swearing in.
Mayor.
Hmm? Oh, we have the, the City of Bowie Diversity Committee will offer a presentation on Black History Month, highlighting African-American neighbors who have had a notable impact on Bowie and Maryland.
Thank you, Mayor Adams. Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Elvita Dixon, and I am here tonight on behalf of the Diversity Committee to give the presentation for Black History Month. And I want to congratulate you on your service award and the other members of Lambda Gamma Gamma for your proclamation in honor of service that you all have given to the community, because that is part of the rich fabric and culture that makes up black history in America. So I'd like to acknowledge where we have been as a people and give nod to who we are becoming. Our story is as old as America herself, and it is woven into the very fabric of the cosmos and seeded in the soil of the earth. While our shared story is complexed and nuanced, each day is a chance for us to draw closer together as we write our story. We, the people, who write our story to form a more perfect union, that is our charge. While the history of black people in America is one of nuance, it is a history that is shared with the population at large. Black History Month began as Negro History Week, initiated in 1926 by Dr. Carter G. Woodson, noted historian, author, and Harvard scholar, to increase awareness of the overlooked and ignored contributions of black Americans. ignored contributions of Black Americans to our country's history and culture. Black History Month is observed in the month of February because it is also the birthday month for both Abraham Lincoln, our 16th President, who issued the Emancipation Proclamation to End Slavery in the U.S., and Frederick Douglass, abolitionist, social reformer, and civil rights advocate. Many gifted and talented Black people have paved the way for us and future generations, allowing a new story to be told. We honor them, such as the Lambda Gamma Gamma Chapter and the other Greek organizations that are part of the Divine Nine. Also, in addition to Frederick Douglass, the state of Maryland has gifted us with Benjamin Banneker, an astronomer, almanac author, surveyor knowledgeable of mathematics and natural history, and builder of a wooden clock at the age of 21, having modeled it from a borrowed pocket watch. Cab Calloway, a master of scat music and the first African-American musician to sell a million records from a single song, and to have a nationally syndicated radio show. Thurgood Marshall, a lawyer and civil rights activist who served as Associate Justice of the Supreme Court of the United States, who prior to taking the bench argued the landmark civil rights case Brown versus Board of Education, which ended segregation in public schools. Harriet Tubman, a woman who escaped slavery and is believed to have made 19 missions to rescue at least 700 enslaved people as part of the Underground Railroad, and an activist for women's suffrage. Billie Holiday, a talented jazz singer, and Miles Frost, a Bowie State University alum, Tony Award winner, Grammy nominee for his portrayal of Michael Jackson in the Broadway production of M.J., the Musical. The good news about this story is that it is still being written. It is based on who we are, what we have been through, and to form that more perfect union, constant work is required by all of us. We all have a charge. This story is being written by the girls and boys working to get the tools to show their genius. We honor you. It is being written by the young adults at historically Black colleges and universities who will be the first in their families to graduate college. We honor you. It is being written by professionals and entrepreneurs serving as pillars in the community. We honor you. It is being written by mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, and everyone doing their best to be their best. We honor you. This day, each day, his story is her story, and together we will write a great work. Thank you for allowing me to give this presentation on behalf of the Diversity Committee, and the theme of our next Bowie Speaks, which will be held on Tuesday, February 25th, here at City Hall, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m., we invite all persons in the community to come out and hear a panel discussion that continues our theme of Black history. And the topic that we are going to be discussing is Voices United: The Impact and Future of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have the City of Bowie Community Outreach Committee will offer a presentation on Heart Health Awareness Month, highlighting the importance of heart health.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, Staff, Community Members. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm Mary Ellen Winland, Chair of the Community Outreach Committee, and tonight I'm joined by Destiny Parker, one of the committee's newest members. February is Heart Awareness Month, a time for us to come together and recognize the importance of heart health. Cardiovascular disease is a leading cause of death in the United States, responsible for one in four deaths. Nearly half of all U.S. adults, 47%, have at least one of the key risk factors for heart disease: high blood pressure, high cholesterol, or smoking. About one in three adults has high blood pressure, which can lead to heart attacks and strokes if left untreated. Heart disease affects people of all ages, but it disproportionately affects certain groups. For instance, African-Americans have a slightly higher risk of heart disease with a higher rate of hypertension and heart failure. When it comes to heart attacks and strokes, second, every second counts. If you or someone with whom you're with has any symptom of a heart attack or stroke, don't hesitate and call 911 immediately. The common signs and symptoms of a heart attack include chest discomfort, shortness of breath, discomfort in other areas of the upper body, arms, neck, back, jaw, stomach, breaking out in a cold sweat, nausea, and lightheadedness. The FAST acronym is an easy way to recognize and respond to the sudden warning signs of a stroke. F: face drooping, nausea. A: arm weakness. S: speech difficulty. T: time to call 911. Many of us may not realize the risk factors we face, such as high blood pressure and high cholesterol, but we have the power to make a difference by educating ourselves, getting regular checkups, and making small changes by eating healthier and managing stress. We can significantly reduce our risk. We remind everyone to make heart health a priority, not just this month, but every day. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. At this time, we will be moving on to city boards and committees, appointments, reappointments, and swearing in.
Hold on a second. Okay, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Ms. Jackie Crumpton to the Community Outreach Committee.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, the motion carries. Is Ms. Crum- Ms. Crumpton here?
Mister.
Ms. Crumpton.
Mr. Crum.
Mr. Crum, I'm sorry.
Ms. Crumpton, would you please come forward? Would you step back and raise your right hand? I state your name.
I, Jackie Crumpton.
Do swear or affirm?
Do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will.
Support the Constitution.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Be faithful.
Be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support.
And support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill.
To the best of my skill.
And judgment.
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality.
Without partiality.
Or prejudice.
Or prejudice.
Execute the office of regular.
Execute the office of regular.
Member of the.
Member of the Outreach.
Committee.
Committee. Community Outreach Committee.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
Congratulations. Here, here. We do want to thank you for your volunteerism and for helping us to keep the city moving And here is your citation, and you can give everybody a good handshake. Thank you.
Welcome aboard. I want to put you to work.
There you go. Immediately. All right. We will now move on to council announcements, and I will open the floor. If there are any announcements to be made. Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick reminder for folks, because I always seem to need it. This weekend coming up is the recycle event for electronics. For whatever reason, I always remember it about two weeks afterwards. So I said, you know, this time around, I'm actually going to try and make it there and see if I can't recycle a few things. So just wanted to share that for everybody, since I know I forget.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is anybody's hand up on the screen? I don't see anyone. Okay. All right, we will move on now to the City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Mayor Adams and City Council and all the residents in Bowie, especially the folks who live on Kingsville Drive. I'd like to start by saying that congratulate the Lambda Gamma Gamma Chapter, Omega Psi Phi, for the acknowledgement here as a fine member of the Divine Nine, and congratulations on that. I'd also like to mention something about Black history that's as significant as what we heard. Abraham Lincoln, in fact, did the Emancipation Proclamation as an act of war. He wanted to make sure that the Confederates could not use the enslaved people for the war effort, which was rather brilliant. However, he did something even more significant than that. He engineered and directed and controlled the process of getting the 13th Amendment into the Constitution in December of 1864, I believe, before he was murdered, and which that amendment to the Constitution abolishes slavery, which was a tremendous thing, since I'm sure some people were considering reinstating it in one state or another. But with that, Mr. Lincoln put that all behind the United States of America, just for the record. Very visionary.
Thank you, City Manager. At this time, we will move on to the Consent Agenda. I'll open the floor for any motions.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, motion carries. We have no old business this evening, correct, City Council?
Correct.
Thank you, ma'am. We will now move on to new business, and the first item will be the Public Safety Committee presentation. Representatives from the Public Safety Committee will brief council on committee recommendations. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Mr. Lot, City Manager, also Chief, thank you for the opportunity to be here and speak with you this evening. The Bowie City Council's Public Safety Committee has been... By the way, I'm Dell Billings. I'm the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, just for the record. The Public Safety Committee has been long concerned about the vulnerability of our juveniles, of our citizens, our young citizens, due to violence in the schools. And we've had numerous, several discussions with the Prince George County Schools' security and safety officials, and we believe, however, a more robust approach to school safety is While we acknowledge the existence of the planning guidelines, we think, again, there still is more that needs to be done. As such, we did submit a letter to you that you have in your record, asking for an audit, a safety and security audit, of our schools here in Bowie. However, since that time, and thanks to Chief Preston and Deputy Chief, we had a very lengthy and in-depth discussion at our Public Safety Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, and also thanks to Councilmember Brady, who also is very active in supporting our committee, being at our meetings, and hopefully sharing with you all things that we discuss. But this is something we felt that we need to go on formal record about. When we spoke to the Chief, we came up with some potentials, rather than going immediately to the audit of schools. We believe some home and preliminary work needs to be done. As a result of that, Chief Preston was kind enough to put together a memo that also is a memo with record, recommending as on behalf... That we recommend several things. One is to request the superintendent of schools, as well as the county's safety and security officer of schools, to make a presentation to you, the council. Now, that's one part, but before we go to that level, we think there probably is some other information that we need to gather. Among that information is what, if any, reviews have been done about safety and security in the schools? When was that done? Was it done last year, or was it done two, three, four, five years ago? That's important, because the community, the world, has changed in those years. Certainly, we also like to know what security plans are in place to help make our schools safer. Is it hardware? Is it training? What is it? And if so, what's the prioritization of that increased security level? Does it only include high schools? Does it include middle schools? Does it include elementary schools? Importantly, where does Bowie stack on that list of priorities? And which schools would be covered? In today's world, also, it's very important to know what's this going to cost? Because obviously, we know that money doesn't grow on trees like we would like it to. Money is getting tighter, not just at the community level and the city level, at the county level, the state level, and even more so at the federal level. So that means there's not going to be as much money available to do some of these priority things that we believe needs to be done. So the bottom line is, we presented this to the... To you, the council, to ask that you take a proactive approach with our county, ask that we emphasize public school safety, but especially safety of our citizens and of our young citizens here in our schools. We know we have been touched by potential here in schools. I became aware of school safety in 2002. You know what that was? Sniper. The Beltway snipers. I happened to have two grandkids at Tasker at that time, when the young man was shot at Tasker. And it's only been emphasized beyond that. Now, we know that school safety could not have prevented the sniper situation, but there are situations where our children bring guns, bring knives, other weapons into schools. Our own chief, when he was Deputy Chief, was in charge of a group with a youth running around with a rifle. Luckily, that was resolved peacefully. No citizen was injured, no police officer was injured, and the youth involved was not injured. We want to make sure that if something happens, we're well-prepared, but we want to ensure that other things that could happen are prevented by appropriate safety. One is to request the superintendent of schools as well as the county's safety and security officer of schools to make a presentation to you, the council. Now, that's one part. But before we go to that level, we think there probably is some other information that we need to gather. Among that information is what, if any, reviews have been done about safety and security in the schools? When was that done? Was it done last year or was it done two, three, four, five years ago? That's important because the community, the world has changed in those years. Certainly, we also like to know what security plans are in place to help make our schools safer. Is it hardware? Is it training? What is it? And if so, what's the prioritization of that increased security level? Does it only include high schools? Does it include middle schools? Does it include elementary schools? Importantly, where does Bowie stack on that list of priorities? And which schools would be covered? In today's world, also, it's very important to know what's this going to cost? Because obviously, we know that money doesn't grow on trees like we would like it to. Money is getting tighter, not just at the community level and the city level, at the county level, the state level, and even more so at the federal level. So that means there's not going to be as much money available to do some of these priority things that we believe needs to be done. So the bottom line is, we presented this to the, to you, the council, to ask that you take a proactive approach with our county. Ask that we emphasize public school safety, but especially safety of our citizens and of our young citizens here in our schools. We know we have been touched by potential here in schools. I became aware of school safety in two thousand and two. You know what that was? The Beltway snipers. I happened to have two grandkids at Tasker at that time when the young man was shot at Tasker. And it's only been emphasized beyond that. Now, we know that school safety could not have prevented the sniper situation. But there are situations where our children bring guns, bring knives, other weapons into schools. Our own chief, when he was deputy chief, was in charge of a group with a youth running around with a rifle. Luckily, that was resolved peacefully. No citizen was injured, no police officer was injured, and the youth involved was not injured. We want to make sure that if something happens, we're well-prepared. But we want to ensure that other things that could happen are prevented by appropriate safety and security measures. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Be happy to try to answer any questions or respond to questions as you all may have or recommendations.
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank you for coming before the council and presenting these ideas of things that you recommend the committee recommends that we may look into and try to do. And your collaboration with the chief. And also, I'd like to thank Councilman Brady for his diligence and working with the committee as well. So for myself, I see the list, and those are things I know in my own mind we'll go through and talk about. But again, I really just wanted to say thank you for being succinct in having actual objectives that we can look at to help keep our kids safe. So thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comment? Councilwoman Rogers?
Sure, thank you very much. Today, we met with our lobbyists, and I noticed in a spreadsheet that was shared that under the, I guess, under the umbrella of Ron, Senator Ron Watson, that there were funds being requested to provide additional security, if I'm not mistaken, at Bowie State University. I think he put in for like a hundred thousand dollars to do that. So I know other people see the issues, and they're trying to figure out how to help Prince George's County. And I just wanted to share that it had not, you know, lost its attention from our state representatives as well.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, would you like to? Go ahead. Councilman Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Billings, for the work you do in leading the Public Safety Committee. I appreciate the chief and the deputy chief for their efforts. And it was a very interesting conversation we had last Wednesday night. It wasn't too raw or too intense, but it showed that this is a serious issue within the community, and we need to look at it and address it. And I think one of the important things we need to do is we need to get information from the county on the issue before we start asking or meeting with them. So I think keying off of what the additional memo that the chief had with requesting the superintendent, I'd say the head of security to bring them here, we need to ask about things like, do they do an audit? I'm sure they do, but.
Yes, they do.
You know, let's don't assume something that may or may not be true. And what's involved in the audit? When was the most recent one done? Was it comprehensive? Was it limited to the high schools or to all schools? Was it limited? You know, if it was limited, what was the selection criteria? So these are the kinds of information we need to glean. And probably an important aspect of this discussion is what part of the information can be made public? Because the concept of securing the doors at schools or putting metal detectors in, it's very generic. But if you then start talking about how it's wired, where it's put, what are the limitations? When you get into the sensitive details, that may not be information that we want to share publicly. So we need to make sure we balance between that. So I'm fully supportive moving forward and making a request, come up with a list of information we need as a starting point to have a discussion, and then make the request of the participation. With the end game being define what the problem is, what is the solution that is proposed? What is it going to cost and how long will it take to implement? So, but I do want to thank the committee for joining this. I think you also kind of started the issue when we talked about the volunteer fire department last year. So I'm just curious what we'll see in three to six months from the Public Safety Committee. But thank you for the service on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Brady. Certainly, those are many of the things that we did discuss at our meeting. And the Public Safety Committee, if I could speak on their behalf, fully supports the effort that Councilmember Brady has in getting the background first. And then that would make a more viable and worthwhile presentation from the county superintendent. And it provides some opportunity for the city council and city manager and all to weigh what role the city may have in that, if any. And at that point, whether or not an audit needs to be done of the city schools, if there hasn't been one recently, and what efforts we can encourage the county to take to make sure Bowie doesn't fall by the wayside and get lower down on the priority list. So thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you tonight. We look forward to continue working with you as a city council. And certainly, I'll reiterate that we truly appreciate Councilmember Brady's efforts, Chief Preston's, Deputy Chief Liberati's involvement in our committee. Deputy Chief is the liaison now, but Chief is with us often and provides some very direct insights and very important information to us as to what's going on in the county or in the city and the county in many cases. And we appreciate all the staff efforts and everything our police department does to make sure our citizens are safe. So thank you very much for your time and attention tonight.
Appreciate your presentation. Next, we will have the Information Technology Committee presentation. Representatives from the IT Committee will brief council on the committee's objectives for two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six. Good evening.
Good evening. It is, it always tickles me to be here. I am John Isis, and I'm the chair of the IT Committee. With me is Rich Bleach, who is our secretary. We'd have other members here tonight, but most of them are professional information technology people. And their jobs usually run eight, ten, twelve, sixteen hours a day. So that's, they weren't able to join us tonight. You have in your package a detailed memorandum I wrote that talked about in detail what it is you're trying to do in two thousand and twenty-five. And I'm just going to try and hit the highlights tonight. I'm not sure how things are going to work, but I do have a PowerPoint presentation that I'm fully prepared to ignore. We have three principal goals in the information technology for two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six. Is first, to support the city of Bowie in the smart city framework that council discussed with the IT Director and City Manager Lot last, well, when the budget was being prepared last year. And we had, it's been our honor and our privilege to look through the early drafts. I'll talk about that very briefly next. Secondly, we have been tracking very closely Prince George's County's artificial intelligence applications. And we are very interested in what it is they'd like to do with it, particularly where it impacts municipalities. There are two initiatives, and we'll talk a little bit about that, what's going on. And last but not least, fortunately, as a lead-in tonight, I have Governor Moore's State of the State address last week from two thousand and twenty-five, when he talked about artificial intelligence, biotech, and quantum being leading initiatives for the state of Maryland. And that will not work unless there's a sufficient broadband infrastructure in place. It's one thing to have all of these millions of gigabytes and terabytes and petabytes of data flowing back and forth across the state. But it's going to have to go through fiber optics, and it's going to have to go through the public right away. And it ties in very nicely with Bowie's initiatives on Dig Once. And a new initiative in the state of Maryland, which is to apply Dig Once to residential apartment buildings. It's been the discussion that allows tenants to have, that will allow, if implemented, tenants to have an opportunity to get more than one broadband provider in a rental property. Smart City Framework. I have to tell you, we had a chance to review, to go over with Todd as he went through, Todd Peterson, when he went through developing the Smart City Framework, and it is excellent. It's currently under review by the department heads within the city. Because part of this, it's not a matter of let's go buy new boxes. We're also talking about ways for people to work together differently. And it isn't going to work together differently without the understanding and the commitment and the cooperation to move this data between stovepipes. And sharing data. And when you talk about sharing data, you're going to have to talk about common elements of design. You can't go through life with one in a file saying, everybody, we will have a street address and a file called Address Street, and somebody else having a file called Street Address, and somebody else having a file called S T period underscore address. So there'll need to be a little look at how we do this sharing between us. And it could require some adjustments in the way personnel are assigned and the way the departments are working and how we go about working through that. And critical to this will be to revise where we can, based on our experiences, both in the government and the private sector, on the organizational change management in support of the city framework. I will tell you that based on everything we see, we have seen a great deal of very valuable software and technology in this city that needs a little different attention on how it's put together. For example, the city uses Bowie, Maryland, the Bowie, My Bowie, Maryland app that could be on everybody's phone. Right now, if you were to report a downed tree after a storm, that would be seen by either the Public Works Department or it would be seen by the Community Development's Arborist Department. Where it would be looked at on a screen, and somebody would type it into an Excel spreadsheet, and the Excel spreadsheet would be attached to an email, and the email would be sent to somebody who would print it out. There are tools that are available in the Microsoft three sixty-five that you have on servers today. When people understand the power, you'll be able to get the full value of what we have. In the event of an emergency, it would be possible to set up separate groups within this, or a focus group that would include the Arborists, Public Works, Community Development. It's a little more difficult to do with the Leash Department because they have separate systems. But to have one common set list of adjustments, like, that's the kind of thing that the Smart City Framework is intending to address. What we're going to do in consultation with Todd and with other members, other department heads, and we've talked to just about every department head over the last year or two about how they use IT and how they'd like to use IT. Recommend secure and convenient processes using current systems to share documents and retrieve proceeding, and retrieve official proceedings for residents, city departments, city committees, and the council. I also sit as a liaison in the Environmental Advisory Committee. And periodically, the Environmental Advisory Committee puts together a sustainability plan or sustainability recommendations. It ought to be possible, with the right permissions and with the right security and the right oversight, to have those documents in draft form used on the MS three sixty-five platform that you have so that everybody can work on one document simultaneously and speed up the process. I am certain that we have all lived through document development where this is Plan forty-three B, Revision one A, Revision two Z. Which revision are you working on? Is it the one that stated one point, two point five? This type of confusion, which slows down consultation, is something that if properly addressed and understood in a working plan, is something that the city could address now using the systems that are already in place. I have said before, Bowie is a pretty darn smart city. All we're suggesting is we look at the tools that we have to become a smarter city. And the framework that is under review right now, that I believe you'll have a chance to see before the budget process goes through, we'll talk about some of the personnel, and it will have been reviewed by the department heads. I also know that there have been some changes recently in the department head and department head assignments. That means some people are going to be new and some people are going to play catch up. But I know that it's underway. I've seen the plan, and it's excellent. It's, for a city this size, it's just an excellent document. We will support the city council where appropriate for any IT implications as you go forward and looking at, is it necessarily important or valuable to revise the city plan and update it for the next five years? We will support AI applications that make sense. I wish we stopped using the word artificial intelligence for something that is at best synthetic cleverness. Right now, the tools that we have in our hands are extraordinarily powerful. But they're about as mature as a fifteen-year-old. And I don't think you would give the keys to a Ferrari to a fifteen-year-old. There are security implications in how the city can adopt artificial intelligence, particularly generative intelligence. I would not use generative and artificial intelligence today in the city of Bowie on any matter that involves personnel, real estate, or finances, particularly if you're going to use something that is a public generative, generative artificial intelligence to help you write documents. Those of you who've had a chance to look, if you have any of the transcripts that come from these meetings where an artificial intelligence attempts to create a set of minutes. Oh, don't bother. It's just horrible by and large. It's, it has, it has extraordinary weaknesses. I tried to use artificial intelligence to take the paper that, the longer version of this into the front of you. And it took what ought to have been about three slides and turned it into sixteen. And none of it made any sense, so I had to throw it all out. But we need this. It will make things valuable for us. When we can address the security issues properly and cybersecurity issues properly, when we can ensure that we're getting sources that are not being scraped from Reddit. I do not want to use a large language library that depends on the conversations that go on in Reddit to write anything that would represent the city of Bowie. But they're there and they're available, and they can be used. They have to be carefully monitored, and it's not something that you can use automatically. And again, the Smart City Framework addresses some of these issues. There is one other issue that we're going to, that we would like to follow and make a run. The city currently owns the dot gov address. Currently, the city's email address is all ended in dot O R G. That was a decision that was made early in the internet mail business. We're going to monitor as close as we can the transition into a Bowie, city of Bowie dot gov address. Now, this is not, this is, the benefit to the city of Bowie is like using a Maryland driver's license with a star on it that assures the people at TSA that you are the person that is showing up at BWI to get on an airplane. The assignment of a dot gov address is validated and verified by the, now I can't remember the name, by the agencies that assign you, that assign these addresses. You can't get a dot gov address unless you are a government and you have been able to present this. The city of Bowie owns it. And I recognize how cumbersome it is to change your address. It was awkward to change the address to this building, to Fred Robinson Drive. It will be a little awkward for this, but it is something that will provide the city some benefits and credibility so that when emails are sent, when documents are sent, when people are reviewing, they will know that it is from City of Bowie a government, not City of Bowie, a nonprofit organization. It will require coordination, not unlike changing other, like changing an address or changing jobs or changing titles. It's just a matter of deciding when and how to do it. And again, it'll be dependent on the city's overall communication strategy about when to go forward and do that. The city's owned the dot gov address for, to my knowledge, approximately two years, maybe longer. And it's just a matter of deciding whether or not to move that. Prince George's County. Prince George's County has two committees that are working on artificial intelligence. One committee is being managed by the county council, and another, which is in the process of being created. It's currently sitting as a pending action as a resolution by the county council. There's an existing council, an existing artificial intelligence committee that is being managed through the county executive. How this turns out will probably wait until the election in two weeks, when we have a county executive to work with that. One interest is how will the county use artificial intelligence for its own operations? How will it manage the permitting process? How will it communicate? If I had my brothers, it wouldn't, a single application for something like adding a fence to your backyard would be simultaneously reviewed in both the city of Bowie and Prince George's County and cut the review time from step, 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 step to two steps, where the communication goes back and forth. I'm hoping something like happens. The Prince George's County Council is particularly interested in making Prince George's County a hub of artificial intelligence. a hub of artificial intelligence. I think Prince George's County is in ideal position to bring some maturity to the artificial intelligence program, because today, the artificial intelligence program is being designed by 25-year-old geniuses in Silicon Valley. And you certainly need, it's a case for diversity to make sure that there are people using it for applications in this, in this country, and Prince George's County has the population and the intelligence to bring some maturity to the whole artificial intelligence development. We expect to communicate with the Prince George's County CIO, their new deputy director, through the Prince George's County Technical Council, Technology Council. I'm a member. Joanne Marshall Hobbs, who could not be here tonight, is also a member. We're trying to keep track of what they're doing on that, and it seems to be focused more on economic development than city-county applications, but we'll see how that's turned out. It's a fairly new organization. We will keep you informed of what we know. Last, almost immediately after I submitted this report, I had good news and bad news. The House of Delegates had set up House Bill 626, which would have, had it been fully mature and had fully developed, used, directed the state to use Dig One's practices and state and county rights away, so that the first fiber optic provider that was building out this broadband network would be reserving space in multi-cell conduit that others could come along and share the cost with. The second half of this was, in the event that major renovations go to existing apartment buildings or multi-tenant residences, in the event that new multi-tenant residences are built, that the building would have an infrastructure in place that would permit more than one broadband vendor to serve that building. Unfortunately, as we got down to the wire, and the midpoint of the session is next Friday, there was no sponsor in the Senate yet for this bill, with everything that's going on in the House of Delegates and the Senate this year, there simply wasn't the bandwidth to go through and build the coalition that would be necessary. Delegate Bo Offo, formerly of this council, Delegate Taylor, representing this district from Prince George's County, and Delegate Phillips from Baltimore County, all three responses for this bill, but they withdrew it because it wasn't just going to be, it wasn't going to be possible to get it through in this session. So I'm looking forward to more discussion that does a better job answering the how-to and when questions that weren't clearly addressed in the bill, but I'm hoping when something comes up, we'll be in a position to talk to you and make a recommendation where the city itself could be interested in recommending its adoption. This is something that would benefit the whole state from Allegheny County all the way through the eastern shore, and Bowie set this up first, but this will also complete the network inside the city. Sadly, it was pulled just after I sent this in, but I think everybody's learned a lesson on how to get some of this stuff done, and I'm looking forward to working, if you will, as a subject matter expert over the summer with Delegate Bo Offo again, and Delegate Taylor, and Delegate Phillips, and perhaps getting a chance to talk to somebody on the Senate side that will see your rationale that you've already adopted. Any questions?
Any questions in the council? Seems like there aren't any questions, or that we lose the people with questions. No questions, seem like we don't have any. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Oh, my pleasure.
And a good job that you're doing.
Oh, thank you very much.
All right, at this time, we will have the fiscal year 25 mid-year budget report. Staff will update council on city finances and progress towards the completion of budget objectives, and city manager, I'll turn it over you for mine.
Right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I dive into this document, I'd like to make an announcement to the public that Dr. Hyun Ah, standing there, this is our new Public Works Director. I want you to meet him. We are, we are advertising the deputy, the assistant manager's position, and it started Friday, and we hopefully will get some really, really sharp young people help with the span of control. That's probably caused Mr. Dr. Ah to lose a little hair. All right, but he's in control of that thing, and it made no sense to search for a guy when he was already doing a job for the last too much, right? So just for, just to instill some confidence in you, over the last eight and a half years or so, I hired Manny Bizerto and modified Denise Mahoney's old office to make business operations, so we have somebody, know somebody everywhere, and she does a whole lot more than that, but that's, that was a big one. Todd Peterson is our IT Director, and he's been here, I think, seven years, and he's taken us from, you know, a little behind the eight ball to be out forward, he and Denise. And so, so we just, last year, we hired a new chief police, Wayne Preston, sitting on the other side of the room there, and right after that, we hired Robert Roddy as a deputy chief. Now, these gentlemen are both extremely connected to the Prince George's County Police Department, and we, as a result, we have a great relationship compared to College Park and other places I work, so. And of course, I mentioned Dr. Ah, and we're going to, and also, we modified that position to create January the 3rd, 17, the Communications Division, after we received, had the battle of bulging here over the marketplace. And, and so it was apparent that we hadn't communicated well, and we've been doing a much better job over the last seven years. So I'd like to, for the benefit of the public, to read a correspondence that I sent to the mayor and city council. It reads as follows. Honorable members of the Bowie City Council, I am pleased to submit to your four-year review fiscal year 2024, 2025 mid-year budget review. This report covers the status of the objectives committed to in the budget, as well as the mid-year financial summary. The general fund revenues and expenditures appear to be on target for 2025. It's 2025 adopted budget. Revenues at the midpoint are 49.7 million, while expenditures are 36, 32.6 million dollars. The city's major revenue source, of course, is property, real and personal property, and that increased by $3,638,304 compared to the same time last year. So when it comes to numbers, that's certainly a positive fact. General fund expenditures increased by 4.6 million dollars in the first half of the fiscal year, and is, it's most attributed to transfer to capital projects, funding totaling $2.8 million, with most of that remaining increase allocated to public work. The change in the net position of the water and sewer division decreased by $1,806,616 due to increased expenditures for the water system, distribution system, capitalization project, which we all are aware and involved in, in the first half of this fiscal year. Actual water consumption has improved over the last year, but continues to grow at a slow rate due to efficiency improvements in household fixtures and homeowners' conservation practices. The city's economic outlook remains stable. However, with increasing expenditures, the rise in the cost of rehab, to rehabilitate aging recreation amenities, coupled with inflationary impact on goods and services lingering from the pandemic, and without a planned tax increase, it's difficult to produce a balanced budget without using large portions of the city's fund reserve. Some argue that the, that the fund balance is simply future tax uses, and so it's reasonable. Revenues and expenditures for all funds are explained in the financial summary of this document. This report also depicts the status of each department's objectives and the progress of each capital improvement project. It is hoped that this programmatic information will illuminate many significant accomplishments made during the year, as well as provide a schedule for the completion of all the objectives signed off for D Lot, ACM, ACM, CPM, city manager. So, mayor and council, I'm going to, I spent some time Sunday, I guess, going through this document, and there are some things I want to highlight, and of course, I also have all the department directors and senior office directors here tonight to answer any questions you all might have about anything, and of course, anything you want to know, we'll certainly get an answer to, but, but, so if that, if those circumstances arise, allow us to do the musical chairs, get people from the audience to the staff position. So that's the correspondence that, that was, that I sent to you all, and not residents know what that is. So I'd like to move to the highlight and objective and accomplishment. If we go to page three in the document that was submitted to you, you'll see that under the communications component of the budget. In particular, I like to point out number two. By September 2024, develop new materials and strategies for educating and engaging new residents of South Lake and the other new city neighborhoods, including, of course, Melford, which is building up. Status is outreach to South Lake and other new areas is ongoing. Staff attended several, several community meetings with the police department and promoted the city services, Alert Bowie and Communication and Community Development in South Lake and other communities throughout 2024. You know, I'd like to ring the, you know, just in an interview, but when interviews, you're supposed to tell them how great you are, right, and how wonderful you think you are. Well, this is an opportunity to talk about how we, we, the staff and the city, have seamlessly incorporated South Lake and the Melford community without fail. The only problem we had with Melford during the snowstorm is that they failed to turn over their, some of their streets to us, and to our standard, of course, and I think they're working on it now. So there were some streets we simply could not plow because they were property, and we don't work on property, property. But we were able to get the main drag, the main streets over there, they're ours, and, but we'll work that out. But we are, as far as our police department, our code enforcement, and the 60-person division, Solid Waste Division, they have incorporated and absorbed these new developments without If I could, I'd like to proceed to page seven. That is the emergency management component of the, of the budget. In particular, the, the conduct, the number three there, conduct, conducted emergency response-related functional tabletop exercise in, in May 30, by May 30, the 2025. Of course, that, that has not occurred yet, but what I wanted to highlight is that how, whenever we've had issues, snowstorms, you know, any, you know, wind, rain, our, our emergency management operation has been on top of all situations, and, and I think that's commendable, and this, the fact that they intend to practice their, their craft and get even better is, is a tribute to Lee Clonwell, Lori, and Andrew, who are working really hard to do that. But whenever there had been an emergency situation, from the explosion over behind, across from the senior center, that senior living place, to the last snowstorm, our emergency manager and people associated with it have been in the EOC, and on top of everything, and in their EOC, they know how to contact everybody who's somebody who can affect the relief associated with whatever crisis is upon us. So I wanted to highlight that for you all and the residents of Bowie, and we're in, we can't control natural disasters, but we can certainly manage the assets we have and other people have to make things better. I'd like to move to page 12, and to the IT Information Technology Department. For the record, Todd was the second person that I hired. The first one was emergency management. No correlation here, just as a matter of fact. So both of them are all pros here in Bowie. But the information technology, I'd like to point out that city, it says, number five, the city of Bowie is committed to advancing its smart city initiative, a three-phase program aimed at transforming the city through technology and innovation. The goal of this initiative is to enhance urban efficiency, urban efficiency, sustainability, and quality of life through the integration of technology and data-driven solutions. And of course, they delivered that phase one of that in, in December. My point is, you know, you know, I, you know, I have, even though I'm a political science major, I did learn to fly four helicopters and one airplane, so I have a comprehension of technical matters. We have grown in leaps and bounds, and we're going to grow some more, and not to give any previews, but they'll be, we'll be presenting in my budget, most likely, a capability to, to increase our IT protective and efficiency operations in, in the budget. But I wanted to highlight that it is our position that we intend to continue as a smart community, but we already are a smart city by the way we manage our situation. For example, you know, if, if our IPD, everybody went away, the county would try to do something for us, and not that I want that, of course, but, you know, and the state police would do what they could, hypothetically. However, if our IT department shuts down, we all may as well go home, because everything that we do is automated, absolutely everything from ticket, speed cameras, parking dogs, all, all that stuff, and all of this is, we manage that through automation, so we are a smart city, and we're just going to get better at that over time. I'd also like to highlight on page 15 of the packet, number three there, it says, enhance ADA accessibility through an accommodation program that will utilize, utilize to full mandated accommodation requests for individuals participating in the city's sponsored recreation programs, meetings, and events. The Department of Community Services has successfully launched a sign language interpreter for primary stages of the all-large city events, and it's active, is ongoing, and continues to adjust. Also, if you look at our city hall, for which we've maintained over the time, you know, if you're, if you're in a wheelchair, you can go anywhere in city hall without an impediment. Automation in our doors, our elevators can accommodate, and we intend to continue that effort and get even better at that in the future. If we could go to page 18, which is senior services. You know, a while back, we had an event at the senior center. It was in the middle, it was a daytime event, I'm sure it might have been a retreat or something, we do, that's a good place to do a retreat, but we were there early, 8:15 or so. And when I noted that at 8:27, there were 10 senior members standing at the door, waiting for the door to open enthusiastically, and, which is, I think, makes it all worth, worth the whole issue and the money that we spend, because we can enhance these people's lives in their, in their senior years, of course. But on page 18, we talk about, one of the services that we provide is transportation services to local voting polls, and, and so that's an objective that was completed. We also, we use neighbors, helping neighbors, help seniors who can't do certain things, like shovel the driveway, shovel their sidewalks, and we, we have endeavored to expand the services to include extended afternoon appointments for our residents. You know, so I- You know, so I, that's, that is a significant, those are significant accomplishments, and I have one more before I turn it over to you all, the cross-examiners, or, you know, pleasantly, I hope. Planning and sustainability. Of course, we have a new, new director there, you all know Mr. Hall, and so, but if you look on page 34. For those of you who are like me, I want to save the planet for my three-year-old and nine-year-old, the item number three there helps us do that, and, and we collaborate, well, the collaboration between Public Works Department and Sustainability and Planning Department to look for ways to express a, an expansion of the food waste pickup program, and of course, that saves us some money from, from tipping fees, also saves the planet from the methane gas that's, that's, gets created by elsewhere, by our normal trash. And so the collaboration and the FY 2026 budget requests are being completed, and of course, by charter in law, in the first week in December, I think, 10th or something like that, that I have to present a balanced budget, and I intend to do so. So Mayor and City Council members, we, the staff of Bowie, are prepared to answer any questions you have associated with our mid-year review. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, City Manager. I will open it up to council, any questions on the mid-year budget review? I will start off with Councilwoman Andebamadu.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me. Good evening, everyone. While I don't have any public questions regarding the mid-year budget review this evening, I do just want to share on the record, especially for District Four, that I will email my questions of clarification to staff for more details and hope that they get addressed during the budget cycle. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor Procham?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, as usual, to the entire staff for the, the good work that you're always engaging on behalf of the community. I want to start with a couple of, of questions. One just kind of came top of mind as I was driving over here. I noted that the state roads have been treated with a pretreatment for snow and ice, the great storm that's apparently gonna be fall us fairly soon, which then all of a sudden now is gonna be heading further south. Regardless, there's supposed to be some type of winter weather, and so what I wanted to ask, if there has been any thought, consideration to, to looking into pretreatment for our roads? Obviously, we engage in salting and sanding and plowing, and I'm curious if that's been looked into, if there's some possible value add for select streets or what have you, and I open that up for your, for your input and consideration.
I'll, I'll chime in. Dr. On and I had a discussion about, is brine, is that the term? Yeah, yeah, well, of course, Bowie, by most Prince George's County are, are salted and sand and plowed. However, since I, you know, I hired a young, you know, engineer, the PhD, he has informed me that it would be better for us to incorporate brine into our processes. So we, we're looking to see how much that will cost us for next year. Of course, I, I bet anybody that after the 20th of February, we're not gonna get any more real snow. It'll just rain, it just never happens. But January, first half of February, but, but to be ready for next year, we're gonna, we intend to incorporate the purchasing of the brine, and if no other thing, I mean, depends on how much we have and available, is pre-treat the priority one and two rows, if, if not all, depending, but we intend to use that, yes.
Excellent, thank you. Glad to hear that there's some new, new thought processes coming in, wonderful to hear that things like this being considered. Look forward to, to hearing, to hearing more on that. The next item I have is not so much a question as to what's here, but instead, as I was reading through and listening to this evening's discussion on, from the IT Committee, one of the things that's struck my mind was there's some things that we're not able to speak about here. Councilman Brady mentioned that with regard to the security around the schools, but I would like at some point in time, it doesn't have to be obviously immediate for us to have a closed session, to have a review of the IT infrastructure, security, and where we, where our posture is with that, so that we're aware and familiar with what's going on in that, in that realm. Again, it was, should be, I think, a closed session with conversations that would be perhaps best kept.
Well, we can certainly set that up if, if we don't violate the open, the meetings laws. We'll check with Karen and Melissa and get back to you on that, but I'm sure Todd and his crew are ready to tell you more than you, that you want to hear about how we're fighting off the bad guys every day and other things.
Indeed, thank you. Another item that came up is a query from a, a couple of well-placed residents inquiring about the status of our Bowie sign, and I noted that we have an update, but there's not a lot of detail on that. Can someone perhaps provide a few more insights as to what's going on with the State Highway Administration and, you know, what's kind of dragging things down there?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That has been awarded, the contract has been awarded, the piece of art is being fabricated, and it will be installed this spring.
Awesome, wonderful, thank you kindly.
Thank you.
It took you asking a question?
That, that's right. Wish it into existence. We have the Bowie Golf Course, I understand the next capital project, an inquiry there or two. What's the timing on when construction will begin?
So we are executing the contract this week. They will mobilize after that, so I anticipate the construction to begin sometime in the next 60 to 90 days.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
And I understand that the Ice Arena Project proposal is due end of month, is that right?
That is correct.
Awesome, look forward to hearing news on that.
I'll have updates, specific dates in this week's update to council.
Excellent, very much, thank you very much, appreciate it. And again, thanks to everybody. It's no small effort to put the documentation together and also just to carry on the ongoing day-to-day stuff, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. I'll let you go. No, I, I'll wait till last, please, go right ahead, Councilwoman Rogers.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, City Manager, and everyone sitting out in the audience for the hard work that you put in to ensure that you're meeting your, your expectations that you plan for the year, so I thank you for that. I just had, you know, my, my questions are more general, but one specific question is around the ice rink. As a result of the downtime, is there any significant budget implications associated with that?
I'd need some additional clarification on downtime.
So when the, the rink was not open and available?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, in reference to the old rink.
The old rink, yes.
Yes, yes, the existing, the existing rink. So yes, we, we had some financial implications that were directly related to service, rentals, items like that. However, we do have a claim in with our local government insurance trust for loss revenue and cost centers associated with the repairs. We're waiting to get additional information on that, but it looks favorable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Another question was in regard to Inovalon. Is there any way that we, how do we know whether or not they're abiding by their side of the agreement by keeping a minimum number of employees here in, in Bowie? Thank you, sir.
Good question. Each year, I check with them, and they are required to provide us with their current headcount, which they do, that occurs in August. They have maintained a headcount above the floor we set in our agreement, where the floor is 500 employees, and they are usually around 700. As a reminder, we have a 10-year agreement with them where each year they maintain that 500 or greater headcount, we provide them with $100,000. We, the source for that revenue is our general fund, and the arithmetic that got us there was that's about what we're gonna collect over 10 years, 10 times 100,000, which is a million, I think, there. That's what we will be collecting from them in business, personal property tax. So we're using their presence to, and their money to fund having gotten them here. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Could I ask you a follow-up to that, if you don't mind? Councilwoman?
Sure.
And that is, with those, just a general question, I mean, they have the facility there, so that's great, but as far as employee count, do we know how many of them are actually working out of the facility versus those that maybe this is their, their workplace, but are working remotely from home or anything like that?
No.
Or does it even matter?
Today, it does. When we wrote the agreement, we didn't have, we didn't envision the calamity of COVID and how it has dramatically changed things. We believe there are still a large number of the employees who come in. They are somewhat secretive in their policies and don't like to share them, so we do the old drive-through the parking lot. It's not quite as full as it was pre-COVID, but it's still reasonably full. We do also know that the footprint here has never been the largest. Corporation has over 3,000 employees worldwide, so clearly more of them are elsewhere than here. So does that answer your question?
I, I would just say, maybe we should just give them that question. When they give us a headcount, just ask how many are physically working from here?
And how many remote?
As opposed to working remote.
I'll reconfigure the question and ask them that way.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Andebamadu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a question, just want to add more context to your, to your question. It's about 30 to 40% of those employees that are in the office. So when we met with them and we did a roundtable, they talked about this during that, that since COVID, they have not been able to get people to regularly come back into the office as they once were out in the city of Bowie. So it's about 30 to 40% of their workforce is what's coming into that Bowie location physically, week over week.
Oh, thank you for that information. So I, I think we may want to ask that question of them.
We'll ask it this year.
Yeah. I'll, I'll turn it back over to you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question every, well, I, I, this is IT, and right now, it says you're evaluating the current process for deploying smartphones and tablets to staff. Hopefully, that staff includes council, no. I know it doesn't, so it's rhetorical, but it would be nice. I will say that I do appreciate, because this is just my, you know, first year on council, but I do, I do appreciate the ability now to use my smartphone to look at my email and respond to emails, so it makes it a lot more convenient, it makes me feel like I'm a little bit more on call, which I, which I like to be. So I, I thank you for that. I also noticed that your security is very well in place because I am not allowed to print a document from my Outlook account on my desktop, which I think it's, it's great because, you know, you don't want to have any bad actors come in. Well, it doesn't work for me, it may work for other people. I have to send it somewhere else to print it, so I, I, I believe that your IT security infrastructure is very strong and very conservative when it comes to running a government, it needs to be that way. So thank you for that. Question around data and the future, because we did talk about IT, and I, I didn't see it much in here, but data standards is like, and so I need the IT professionals to, to be able to respond. Data standards are absolutely critical in order to create systems that are able to talk to one another, and I know that we were doing a lot of stuff around IT mid-year this year, but I wanted to know whether or not the, the city has data standards in place that allow for that next step where you can integrate your stovepipe systems, as well as the other part to the question, it may not be related, is it's still a journey to go on the website and find stuff? Although I got, I have, you know, links at the bottom that makes it easier, but I still have to search a little bit. So if you could talk about the data and how that fits into your IT strategy, whether or not you're doing anything this fiscal year, and if not, then that's fine, you can tell me next fiscal year, we're working on it. Thank you.
So our data strategy actually is a major part of the smart city framework, so you will be receiving that framework relatively soon. The draft is being reviewed right now, but we'll be sending that out to you, excuse me, and we'll also, as part of this budget, we are going to be requesting an employee to actually manage the, that data and the data that you speak of, so, but you'll, you'll be getting that, receiving that relatively soon. As far as the website?
Great, thank you, thank you very much. And I did have another question that I marked, but I don't find it, I didn't find it, but I'll send it later. I'll just say that I think you guys have done a remarkable job, so I agree with City Manager, you have a lot to be proud of, everybody does. One, one question, was any of the, if you could name one midterm budget initiative that was the one that was probably most off-target as far as your planning concerns are, Mr. City Manager, what would you say that is, or, or your budget manager, whoever?
Well, I, I mean, there were a couple occasions where we, where the planning was, 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 and implementation was, was too much for us to get it done in, in particular this fiscal year, and, or circumstances caused us to have to keep it forward. But I've been pleasantly surprised, more so than I have about the ability of our directors to accomplish, you know, half or better of their objectives by, by December. And so we're, I have no particular situations like that, I mean, some things are more difficult than other. I mean, business retention, that's, that's one that's, that I worry about, because as you all know, those who are here, we created that position specifically to, to know who our businesses were and to keep them in Bowie. But there are so many things regarding those objectives that are out of our control because of the free enterprise system, that we work hard on that. The one that's, that I think that Alfred Lot, City Manager, thinks is the most important is the marketing of, of Bowie Police Department throughout the country to people who want to be the police here. Now, this is my fifth, fourth or fifth experience with police officers, and unlike Albany, we were sitting in the middle of peanuts and farm fields, that was different, but here, there's so much going on right now, and by my, my quick observation, we're kind of taking each other's police officers. Well, like, so, you know, unlike, and trying not to break Mr. Einstein's rule of doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different outcome, you know, I elected to put the, the marketing dollars in that budget so that we can go out and find people who want to be, I'll speak Southern to you for those who know, who want to be the police here in suburban Bowie, as opposed, and, and, and I think we have a, we have, it's a good, great enough city, and you can, you know, unfortunately, you'll get as much, a really good opportunity for police work, but you have to find somebody who wants to be in a place like this, so you don't get somebody here, and then three years later, someone will go down, down to DC and be that kind of cop. And so that's, that's the thing that worries me most, but I think we're off to the races and we're, and hopefully. and we're, and hopefully we'll reap the benefits by bringing people to Bowie to be on the police department that's, that want to be in this kind of town. And we don't have any bad neighborhoods, all our neighborhoods are pristine. And so, and so the other thing is, of course, you all may, some of you all may already know, I mean, Prince George County, the relationship between Prince George County and us in, in the law enforcement business, all of our, our police officers go through their academy at no, no charge to us. Now, I can tell you that 12 years ago in Albany, even in rural, in the rural Thomasville Police Academy, it was $20,000 per, per person, it was a 13-week course. So that's, that is a gift from the county to us in kind. Every time one of these guys comes up to swear his in, they train there and we didn't have to shell out, you know, $80,000, $90,000. So that's what worked mostly the most, the marketing, the, the city to the right people for police department and retaining our business. We're going to continue to work on it.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And one thing, just really quick, it's only 30 seconds. The number of green Bowie businesses adopted was one, updated was two. So we're, we're moving in the right direction. I guess the question would be something to consider for next year is whether or not the city has the capacity to create some type of certification award or some type of, something that can be presented to local businesses if they become, you know, green. I don't know what that standard is. I know on the federal level, they have that LEED standard, I'm not looking for anything like that within the city of Bowie, but there's a checklist and if, if the city meets five or 10 items on the checklist, if the business meets that, then they get a certification around being a green city, a green business here in Bowie. That's just something to consider as we go into next year. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilman Brady?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I just, I don't have any questions or, or need any clarifications. The report was direct to the point, answered many of the questions and gave an excellent status in where we are two-thirds of the way. So I appreciate staff's effort and the city manager's effort in particular to pull this together. This is, sit and counting, this is the 24th budget I've been involved with, and there are a few faces out there that go back, way back with me, but there are many new faces here. But the new faces, the new talent have built on the progress that we've made going back decades before I got into council. So I just want to commend staff for the work that they do, not on behalf of us up here, although you make us look great, not on behalf of senior administration, but rather on behalf of the citizens of Bowie, they're benefactors of all your good work. I just wanted to commend you on that. And I especially want to give praise to the emergency management and the public works and everything and what they did the last two storms, but in particular, I want to commend you for forcing that next snowstorm tomorrow night to go south of us. So whoever pulled that off.
Lee Cornwell.
There you go. But, but moving forward, I do have a concern, and that's what's unknown on the horizon. And we've seen a lot of tumultuous activity going on to the west of us. And my biggest concern is the possibility that we might see, not only from Washington, but from Maryland, Capitol and Annapolis, unfunded Band-Aids pushed down on us to do things, charge our taxpayers in order to accomplish goals at the state and the federal level. So the next budget cycle or two, that's going to be something in the back of my mind to make sure that that doesn't happen. But I think we're in a good shape, strong shape to move forward. And again, I want to thank you all for your effort. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm gonna, unless, as the council members up there have any questions, I'll go on with mine. And that is, bear with me as I shoot through some of the, because they're kind of on the same area. Number one, with the Ken Hill Center, has that, it seems it's completed, the flooring, the pickleball lines, all of those things, is that now open for rental? Is it back in shape or where are we now?
So new flooring has been installed, the pickleball lines were going in this week. So that should be ready to rock and roll. It was going to be taken out of service for a couple days to paint, hand paint the lines. But yes, the facility can be rented.
Yeah, and, and we are not trying to turn that room just into a pickleball room.
No, it's a multi-purpose room.
It's still the multi-purpose.
That is correct.
And people will be able to rent or whatever to do that.
Yeah, it just diversifies the type of usages that can, that can take place.
And I also have a question about, I was looking at the ADA preparations and my, my thoughts were on the Allen Pond. The question goes to, when will we have that new amphitheater in place? But also, I see you say by June 30th, we should have all the ADA things, and I thought that was wonderful. What, what you had proposed for that in the ADA?
Sure. So this year at Allen Pond Park, we're going to be putting in some additional ADA handicap picnic tables. Most of the picnic spots that are in the park do not have that type of table, so we're putting those in. We're also going to hand-select one or two sites to put in a, it's a decomposed, decomposed granite material, which is ADA-approved. Currently, to get from the path to some of the picnic sites, you have to go through some, some terrain. It's through the grass, it's not really the best, best material. So we're going to be taking offline one or two of those spots. All the work is being done in-house and we're having those opened up by this, this summer. So that's specific to the, the picnic sites in reference to the Allen Pond Amphitheater that is tied up with HUD grant funding. We did just recently get the HUD grant approval to move forward with that project, and that will be lifting off sometime in the middle of summertime by the time we get the project bid out.
Will that disrupt any of the summer concerts and those kind of things?
No, we have a, a plan for utilizing a portable stage in a separate location in Allen Pond Park, so we'll be able to continue our festival series, our summer concert series, all of that type, all the type of fun that, that goes on there throughout the summer.
Okay, great. Thank you on that. I'd like to ask a question similar to what my colleague asked and to Mr. Matthews. I'd like to direct this one to you specifically. What question regarding where we are now did I miss asking you?
Question, question. I didn't ask him about his football team. Super Bowl if you want.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. What a marvelous question, Mayor. Let me see, I don't have my crystal ball in front of me, Mayor, but in light of what I think you're trying to ask me, I would say that the city is in good financial stay. Revenues are showing an increase, more than we expected for FY '25, so we're very pleased with that. Again, still our expenses are outpacing those revenues, but we are, you know, still improving with the assessments to the homes in Bowie. They keep increasing, 3% to 5% each year, so that keeps us in good stay. We've had revenue increases in other areas, especially from our state partners, our income tax, our state shared revenues, our highway user revenues, our police protection aid, all of those things have continued to increase. So from that standpoint, I think we're in good stay. When we're looking at water and sewer, we talked about the 1.8 million difference in the expenditures related to last year. All of that is capital improvement, so we'll be removing that item as an expenditure to a capital cost. We only show it as an expenditure so we can present to you the actual budget and the expenses incurred on a budget basis as opposed to an accounting basis. So all of those things will be capitalized and that goes into the city's assets for the water and sewer division, which are amortized over the useful life of those improvements.
Okay, I know when, in reading through it, you talked a little bit about, in the budget, about the lower consumption of water and so the lower revenues we receive from that. Could you go a little more detail for me on that?
Well, that's been ongoing, Mayor. As you know, we went through and we changed our meters throughout this city and we put radio read meters in. With that, we were hoping to see an increase in our revenues, because we were led to believe that maybe the old meters that were in place were not functioning as designed. Come to find out that those old meters were probably working very well, within a 5% to 7% range. So we haven't seen much difference with our new radio read meters. Over the last, I would say, 10 to 15 years, as people begin to upgrade their homes, they're using more energy-efficient products that are using less water. So basically, less consumption. So we're experiencing that. But I think as long as we keep monitoring that and we have a balance between what we increase for rates, I think our citizenry understands the difficulty of having a water and sewer plant that we cannot grow. We're locked into the 8,000 customers that we have, and that's it. But the cost of running those plants continue to rise and the revenue generated by those plants, those two plants continues to lag. We try to position ourselves to, when we present the budget to you, that we present it in such of a way that we will have enough revenue to cover the ongoing operating expenses on the plant. That also indicates that we'll be increasing the rate on an annual basis. Now, and over the years, we've tried to keep that rate increase between 5% or 10%. Some years, it's just been a 5% increase, and some years, we've had to take it to 10 and then bring it back to 5, just so that we try to balance it so that we're not overtaxing our water and sewer customers, but also we're trying to make sure that we collect enough revenue to maintain the, the facility at the level it needs to be maintained at. We have new staff, we have new skill sets, and as you know, Mayor, I've been here for a little while, so we have had a turnover in those areas. And where we were able to probably do more repair and maintenance on the plant with that older skill set, that skill set has changed now. So we have to replace things when they need to be replaced as, as opposed to repairing something, which is a little different. So those costs can be quite high. I would refer to Mr. Hun, he could, Hun, he would be able to elaborate more on that, but I think he will agree with me, the cost of operating those two plants is significant and we try our best to keep up with it.
Mr. Matthews, thank you for that. I appreciate that. And I'd like to just say thank you to, to all of the staff, city manager. As we can see by what we've seen here, there are a lot of moving parts and you guys are doing a great job of keeping them moving. So I just wanted to say behalf of myself, the council, but also for the citizenry, thank you for all you're doing. And Matty, I did not put you on the spot tonight. All right. Are there any other questions? I'll go to round two.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Broughton?
Very much appreciate it, and I apologize for go-back. Something popped into my mind, it wouldn't be complete if I didn't ask how we are doing with my favorite subject, the water recapitalization. I know we are finished with the, with the section in Kennelworth, I think it was about two miles worth. What is the timing for the, for the next section in both identifying and rolling that
Mayor, councilman, again, my name is An, I'm the Public Works Director. So we are rolling out this, two phases of the water rehab project later, early next, next month, and it will go for about 60 to 90 days, but we are expecting to complete those project waiting by the end of this fiscal year.
Excellent. Can you share with me what the locations are for those?
Somerset.
Somerset. Now, is Somerset, that's for the sewer, correct? For the sewer relining, or is that water as well?
That's water, sir.
That's the water?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. On the, if you could be so kind when, it doesn't have to be right now, unless you have it, the specific streets would be awesome. If you could share those with me, that would be a...
The Philly Brief is coming out tomorrow, there's a short article about the next phase of the project, and it lists the streets and that.
Excellent, thank you very much. And then the, part two of that is on the sewer side. I know that we're relining some of the pipes there. Do we foresee any additional work that needs to be done similar to that? Because I know the problem is not as egregious as the, the water supply.
Councilman, on this, on that matter, would it be okay to?
Yeah, the, you will expect to see some continued efforts both on the water side and the sewer side and the proposed budget coming up for the city council, so there will be some dollars allocated for both water and sewer coming up for you. These will continue and you will be seeing them each and every year for the remainder of your time on the city council.
I knew the water was going to be there, I was hoping that the sewers would be, be a little bit of break on and off. It's a forever project. It's like forever chemicals, we have our own forever project. Thank you, gentlemen, very much appreciate it. And again, thanks for the good work.
Okay, are there any other questions from the council as we go through, going once, going twice? Okay, again, to city staff and to everyone, again, thank you so very much for your patience in being here this evening, but again, it goes back to, you are what makes Bowie so special. And thank you for all you do. And I'll give you a round of applause for that. And I, at this time, will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, any discussion? Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with a aye. Opposed, same favor. Hearing none. The meeting is adjourned.